Meeting started. We have one item, the 2025 biennium budget presentation. We have the Honorable Mayor Armando Paponi and the quite capable Carrie Roller, Finance Administrator. Who's going to kick it off?
All right. Well, thank you for that introduction. I appreciate it. Council President Alberston and council members. Before I begin, I'd like to express my appreciation to our Finance Administrator, Carrie Roller, and Kristin Tavallis, our Fiscal Operations Director. Their team has been working hard for months to bring this balanced budget to you this evening. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge Carrie's new approach to the budget process. In the past, we've sought the community input through the Mayor's Budget Advisory Committee. Recognizing the value of their insights, we wanted to cast a wider net to include even more voices and perspectives. To do this, Carrie introduced several new outreach efforts that have garnered crucial and nuanced data that help to inform our decisions reflected in this budget. She conducted a budget-focused community survey, an educational campaign, and face-to-face outreach at the farmer's market. As a result of these efforts, our budget has been informed and shaped with the input of over 400 community members. Combined with the staff expertise and the input from the Equity Commission, we have better direction on what our priorities must be for this biennium. I want to thank Carrie, Kristin, and their entire team for all their hard work. Each administrator has worked to put forward thoughtful and strategic proposals that are designed to address the most urgent needs of our community. I want to thank the administrators and the staff who put their time and effort in creating these proposals for the benefit of the community and the city organization. Following my brief comments, Carrie will walk through an overview of the proposed budget and a schedule for the presentation. In the coming weeks, each department will present their proposal and will describe the details of the budget document that you've been provided with this evening. As a city, Renton has traditionally been conservative in our spending, which has allowed us to weather some challenging times over the last 20 years. While this budget proposal holds true to that tradition, it also includes significant investments that not only meet the needs of the community, but also creates a positive shift and a lasting impact for generations. Right sizing is an important piece of this budget proposal. Over the past 15 years, our staffing levels have had to change due to the constraints of the economy. We have been able to rebuild staffing in some areas, but our population continued outpacing our capacity. Now, in 2024, as a city of over 108,000, we have an opportunity to invest in staffing, helping to right-size so that we can deliver what our community needs. For every police officer, maintenance worker, or new initiative that we add to our operations, there is work that is conducted and performed by our Internal Services Division. These hard-working teams have been the slowest to rebuild, and yet they are critical to the success, pace, and effectiveness of our efforts. In this proposal, we address this fundamental need within the operation. This budget will address the three key priorities. The first is public safety. We will add resources to our police and legal departments to help address the increase in criminal activity in our city. We are currently 47% below the national average and 8% below the state of Washington's average of officers per resident. Eight additional officers proposed over the next two years will bring us closer to the Washington ratio. Next is the cleanliness and condition of our city. Despite the tremendous commitment of our staff, the period of deferred maintenance and constrained resources have taken a toll. We see and hear about it from our residents and guests who visit our city and parks. Providing a clean city is not an option; it's our responsibility. We are proposing continued funding for downtown cleanup and addressing encampments to keep our public spaces safe and clean. We've also included additional funding for restroom maintenance in our parks. We are proposing increased investment in our transportation projects and upgrade to our city facilities and parks. These improvements are crucial for keeping the city running smoothly and supporting positive future growth. Finally, social services. We are strengthening social services by investing in preventative measures, particularly for the youth, to improve community health and reduce reliance on crisis intervention. In addition to our existing service for vulnerable residents, such as addressing food insecurities, senior utility billing rates, and housing repair support, we will be investing in new services allowing us to do more. As an example, our budget will reflect the use of House Bill 1590 funds to support the Renton Student Health Hub, connecting students to behavioral health services and helping families navigate support system aiming to break the cycle that leads to crisis. For those already in crisis, we are budgeting for continued support of FD Care's program with the Ritten Regional Fire Authority, in addition to our safety net of support services. We will also use our House Bill 1590 funds to continue supporting affordable housing, such as the newly constructed Sunset Gardens, providing not only affordable housing but onsite services for vulnerable groups like seniors, low-income families, and veterans. In closing, what you'll see in this budget are strategic investments designed to right-size our services, improve public safety, clean up our city, and positively impact the lives of residents with an increase on emphasis on social services. With this proposed budget, we will be well-positioned to deliver on the goals of the council's business plan in a way that will be felt and visible to our community. And now I'd invite Carrie to take over the mouse.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Tonight, we're going to be going over the '25-'26 preliminary budget. Some key dates to keep in mind is that by November 30th, we need to communicate to King County the property tax levy, and we ultimately have until the end of the year to pass the budget. We do have a timeline where the legislation will be passed, hopefully by the middle of November, but I do want you to know that we do have until the end of the year by law if we do need some more time to discuss the budget overall. The timeline over the next several weeks is tonight's our overview, and then the next two to three weeks, we will be having departments go over their new budget requests and also their goals for the upcoming biennium. We will be holding our last two public hearings, one on the 14th and the other one on the 21st. And then our budget, we will hold another committee hole on the 28th. That one is just in case we run out of time on the 14th and 21st with our department presentations. We don't, we want to make sure that we get through all the presentations, so we have three set aside, but scheduled just for two at this point. And then our legislation will be, first and second reading will be the 4th and the 18th of November. So having an effective community engagement in the biennium process is very important. We need to hear from our community about what their priorities are with how we want to spend their tax dollars. This year, as Mayor mentioned, we garnered some community feedback in different ways. We did the community-wide survey. We had a budget video that our communications team helped us create that talked about the budget, how we prepare it, and what goes into preparing the budget. We had finance staff at the farmer's market to hear from residents there directly. We had a postcard with a URL code on there that they could go right to our website and provide feedback right on the website. And then, last but not least, we have our public hearings that we hold. We hold three by law per year. Our survey results indicated that the top four priorities were public safety, health and human services, park maintenance, and citywide cleanup. Much of what we heard from the community were really in line with the priorities that we had as an administration, specifically safety, health, and maintenance and improvement to our infrastructure. As Mayor mentioned, we also wanted to look inward at our internal service funds and to really look and make sure we were right sizing those staff in those departments. Our city has grown, our services have grown, and our outward staff has grown, but really needing to look at some of those support staff as well. Lastly, in this budget, one of our priorities was to really look at inflation. Inflation's been really high over the last four years, and we have adjusted our budget for cost-of-living increases, but we have a lot of costs such as fuel, the cost of vehicles, insurance that have gone up over the last four years significantly, and our budget has not kept pace. So we do have some adjustments for inflation in this budget. Our citywide revenues for this biennium are $645 million. And just as a reminder for council, the figures that you're seeing here are over a two-year period, so citywide revenues for one year would be $322 million. Our revenue mix is very similar to what we've had in prior years, where over 40% comes from taxes and another 30% from utility service charges. This budget is approximately 10% more than our 2023 adopted budget, or about 2.8% higher than our adjusted budget. We've been discussing, last time we prepared our budget and at council retreats, we talk a lot about recession and about will it be coming, or, and a lot of times we're saying it's not if it's coming, it's when it's coming. And so when we were preparing our budget last time, we had very high inflation, we had high interest rates, and so we were very careful when we were estimating our tax dollars that are very specific, that are very sensitive to the economy. Although the economy resilience continues to surprise many of us, again, I'm going to say that I really think that we're going to be seeing a slowing of the economy, just within the sales tax revenues alone, that we're seeing more of a flat growth or even a decline. And so, again, this year, we're going to be very conservative with our budgeted revenues when we're estimating. We don't want to overextend ourselves, but definitely adjusting some of the revenues that we're seeing that did come in higher, adjusting those up. So that's some of the adjustments that you'll be seeing. Regarding the economy, some of the headwinds that we're seeing is the high interest rates. It was great to see the interest rates go down a little bit recently, but I, I think that that's really still going to be impacting our sales tax revenues that were coming in. People are really maxed out and don't have the capacity sometimes to borrow more, don't have that discretionary because they're making payments on credit cards. And so that's, we're seeing some slowing in some of our, our spending there. We're also seeing slowing in our building permits and our development fees, just because of the higher cost to borrow money. And then currently, we have Striking Workers are one of our largest businesses in our community that could impact our sales tax base as well. So keeping those things in mind when we're building this budget and, and estimating those revenues. Some of the tailwinds for the economy is really that inflation has gone down, which is wonderful to see. It's not at the 2% rate that economists like to see, but it's definitely not at that 10% amount that we've seen over the last couple of years. Our citywide expenditures are almost $650 million. 37% comes from, it makes up for personnel, and the next highest is utilities at 30%. The inter-fund piece that you're seeing there is internal service funds, and about half of that cost is salaries and wages for the people that are working in internal service funds. And so when we combine that with the personnel that's there, it's well over 40% of our citywide budget is with staffing. So it's really important to consider that when we're looking at adding staff. Budget expenditures are 11.6 more than our adopted budget from prior year. Some of the increases that we're proposing citywide is, one of the main ones is personnel costs. It's a large amount of this overall increase that I mentioned, the 11.1. Wages and benefits increased 12% over the biennium primarily because we're proposing to add 21 positions, a net 21 positions. 75% of those positions will be funded by the general fund. We also have cost-of-living increases, and part of this increase also accounts for some of the things that weren't in our prior budget. We had a, two union contracts that we settled this year for the Police Guild, and so when we're preparing the budget previously, we do an estimate of what we expect to arrive on, and that was a little bit different from what we estimated. So the overall increase in wages is made up of those three reasons. We're also increasing the capital funding for our city, again, because we had taxes come in a little bit higher than we had estimated, as well as we've had open positions, so we've had some budget savings. Anytime we have one-time budget savings, it's always great to use towards some of the one-time costs that we have. So we are definitely investing quite a bit more in capital funding, and I'll go over that in a little bit. Adjustment to inflation for supplies and services, and we're also increasing our human services funding by using the House Bill 1590 funds by $3.5 million over this biennium. When we look at our operating costs based on our population, it's about $23.60 per resident per year, or $6.46 per day. We also have a significant amount of people that enter our city, use our amenities in the city, that just work in the city and don't live. And so when we combine that along with the residents that live here, it drops to 1,430 per person that's entering our city and using our amenities. When we develop the budget, we develop the budget based on the apartment, as well as the six core service areas within our city spaces plan. So the chart on the right is how the current budget that we're proposing is allocated amongst those six core service areas. It's important to look at it both ways because most departments touch more than one of those core service areas. And so looking at where we're devoting our budget funds based on those core service areas is also important to analyze. If we just take a narrower look now at some of the larger funds, we'll start with the general fund. Our revenue sources for the biennium are 280 million, or about 280 million for the biennium, or about 140 million per year. This is the increase of about 10% from our adopted budget, mainly because of increases for BNO tax and sales taxes, which are both consumer-driven, and I'll go over that a little bit more in some future slides. The general fund revenues are made up of over 80% of taxes, so very important to keep our eye on those. Again, same with citywide analysis, our projections of revenue, our last biennium was conservative, and so the increases that we're seeing for the general fund for this biennium are really to equalize what we're seeing revenues actually recognized currently, with just some adjustments down for some of those that are more sensitive to the economy. If we look at some of the primary revenue sources, property tax. This biennium for 2025 is proposing to set the levy at $26.2 million. This includes the 1% of inflation that we're allowed to do, as well as new construction. Our rate is still very low in comparison to the overall amount that people are spending in their, their property tax here in our city. This increase is $300,000, so very small percentage of the overall increase in our budget. As a reminder, we have a significant amount in bank capacity, $15.7 million. And just a reminder, what that is, is if a city chooses not to assess or levy the maximum amount allowed, we can bank that for a future date, and if we want to increase more than we're allowed to do in any given one year, if we have bank capacity, we can increase that more. So even though we're careful to budget our revenues conservatively, this is an area that we could use if the need arises in the future. Another item for council to know is that King County is still fine-tuning and sharpening their pencils with some of these figures, and so this amount is changing every week. We get an update every Monday, and so before we pass the levy amount, I will make sure I update you on the latest figure. Citywide, our sales tax figure is higher than prior biennium for a few reasons. We added the Transportation Benefit District, which was not in our previous budget. Although the taxes received from the Transportation Benefit District and the housing and behavioral mental health taxes are not in the general fund, I did include them on this bar chart because it's important to see sales taxes overall. The largest bar, which is a light pink or mauve, is the unrestricted sales taxes. If we just focus on that, sales tax has outpaced previous, but previous budgeted amount by 8%. So when we were building our budget again, like I said, we were pretty conservative with our estimates, although that we haven't seen the high growth that we did in '21 and '22, our sales tax has slowed. In 2023, we only saw a 1.6% increase, and in 2024, we are projected to have a decline of 2% in 2024. So some of the key primary sales tax sectors as well, retail and auto, makes us almost 40% of our total sales tax, is also showing us a flat growth. The current budget is increasing sales tax to be more in line with what we're, we're seeing, but not quite up to that amount, decreasing it down a little bit, just because we're seeing those decreasing trends. We made changes in our BNO tax structure in 2022 and 2023, increasing the maximum tax cap and increasing our rates. 2025 will be the last year of the tax cap increase, reaching that $12 million mark. Any amount over that $12 million that we see, receive from any one taxpayer in the, in a given year, they have a 75% reduction after that $12 million. The actual revenues realized and rate increases in 2023 were higher than the modeling had indicated, and so we're increasing our BNO tax to match, again, what we're seeing right now, coming in in '23 and '24 with a slight decrease, just to be conservative. Some of the other revenues we're increasing, we're increasing over the biennium is utility taxes. This is a tax on gross income received by utility companies. It's not just our water fund, but it's also energy, cable, phone. This one has been one of those revenue sources that has been fluctuated quite a bit through the pandemic, and it's starting to really stabilize now. We are seeing cable and phone go down. However, energy and water taxes, utility taxes are increasing. So our budgeted biennial revenues are increasing utility taxes by about $2.5 million. Charges for services were increasing 1.4. This includes recreation fees and public safety services. These were slower to recover during the pandemic, and they're, we're seeing increased revenues in both of those categories, so increasing our budget to reflect that increase. And then interest income, increasing that about $1.3 million. This projection is only just a modest increase as we are expecting rates to decrease over the next two years. The city has really good laddering of investments over the next five years, so even though we have maturities and will be receiving some, some larger investment interest income over the next several years, I do wanted to, I did want to be careful about how much we're adding to the budget, because a large amount of our funds are in the state investment pool, which tracks with the Federal Reserve rate, and that gives us the most liquidity. And since the Federal Reserve is planning to decrease, we wanted to be conservative with this estimate. General fund expenditures are about $290 million for the biennium, or about 140 million per year in operating, and about $9 million of one-time funding of capital and debt payments. This is up $11 million from our prior adopted budget. 63% is personnel and very small amount of discretionary, and that's supplies and small equipment category. This biennium includes an increase in general fund positions. As we've talked before, we've been very careful about how many positions we add. It's a significant cost to the city. The chart on the right shows in detail the changes by the department of the net increase of 21 positions. Before adding these positions, we looked at open positions to see if there was any that we could remove, we could repurpose, and we did identify 4.5 to remove. The positions that we're proposing to add are nine for the police department, three in Parks and Recreation, five in utilities, one-half of an FTE for transportation, and eight in overhead for internal service funds, including executive, city attorney, finance, and facilities. The chart on the left shows the number of staff per 1,000 population. This chart shows that even though we're adding 21 positions, our growth per 1,000 residents is holding at the same rate, about 5.5 to 6 FTE per 1,000 residents. As I mentioned, we had a lot of one-time savings in our prior budget, so we wanted to use some of that towards these capital projects that we have needing to fund. The tax and impact fees make up $22 million of this biennial budget. This is an 80% increase over the $12 million we had proposed in our prior adopted budget. Still, a large amount of the capital is coming from anticipated grants or grants that we have in hand, 40% of that, and staff continue to actively apply for grants so that we can help fund some of these larger projects. Because we have more needs than funding available, we do have to prioritize our capitals projects, and so we look at the projects that have grant funding that might just need a little bit more to get it to completion, as well as we look at how it aligns with the council adopted business plan goals. This chart that you're looking at here is just the general governmental capital. It does not include utilities, golf course, or airport. Some of the other additions of expenditures are to increase for inflation that we've seen. Insurance rates have gone up significantly, and so we're adding another $1 million over the biennium for the general fund for insurance. Software and has been another big area of inflation. $3.5 million for software. That's not all from inflation. That also includes some software ads that we did after we adopted the last budget. So as an example, we added the police body cameras after we adapted, adopted the last budget, so that's included in this overall growth when we're comparing adopted budget to preliminary budget. We're also increasing professional services for some parks restroom cleaning. And then the other category, services and other, this is quite, quite a few things. I'll kind of go through a few of them. We have increases in costs of some, some of the things we can't control. So we have valley communications, score jail, legal fees, that's in this other category. We have the city's contribution to the rent and promise campaign for the next two years in this other category, a placeholder in the budget for some of the other unknowns that we're still working on when we were developing the budget. Some of the things were not fully vetted out yet, and some of those things are the police non-commission contract just was settled. Council just approved that last month, and so knowing that there was going to be a little bit more than we had in the budget, setting aside something to, to meet that difference. Human Resources is working on 15 position reclassification requests from staff, and this analysis is being done right now. They compare that to their job description and the market. This category includes a small amount to fund those possible changes. Human Resources will be coming to council to talk about any of those reclassifications in November or the beginning of December, but I did want to set aside some so that we could look at those projections long-term. We also anticipate to do some analysis for compression for our non-represented staff. And then as our costs go up in our general fund, we also need to fund that reserve. Our goal is to have that 12% reserve set aside, and so funding the reserve is also in that other category. Our long range forecast, we've talked a lot about the structure of our tax and authority, and inherently, costs increase faster than our revenues can. The 2025 and 2026 operating budget will use about $2 million of our fund balance reserve to meet the projected funding gap. Long-term, that funding gap grows over the years and future years because of the maximum tax cap that we've increased over the last several years, and the BNO taxes really help close that gap between our revenues and expenditures. And since that ends in 2025, there's no more significant increases year over year. That gap gets wider as you look out to future years. The one-time funding line there that you see is for the capital funding and also for debt payments. I know that we're still using about $2 million of our, of our fund balance or reserves to make up that difference, but this is a, a big difference than we've seen in many of the previous years. And I think that with our conservative revenue estimates and our budgeting for all positions as if they were 100% filled, inherently, this outlook typically does change, but really the intention of this chart is to look forward as if all things projected exist. That line that we're seeing is the fund balance or reserve that's on hand, and it goes down at a steeper pace, starting in 2027, but even though we're having to use some of our fund balance, we're still above the 12% reserve number that we like to see. We're at 26.5 in future years. If we're, we have, the city has several preparatory funds, so looking at utilities revenue, utilities revenue will be $195 million for the biennium, or about $98 million per year. The Utilities Division prepares a rate study to help project out costs needed, not only for operations, but also for future capital needs. And so the rate study came back proposing that we increase our, our water rates by 2% in '25, our sewer rates by 2% in 2026, surface water each year by 3.5%. Garbage is estimated to be about 6.2% per year. And then the King County Metro is our King County Sewer that we don't have control over. We, that'll be 6%, 7%. King County Metro sets those rates. We build them to our residents, and we pass that. We bill them to our residents and we pass that through to them. One item of note is that the garbage rate increase, council will be getting a separate ordinance for that outside of the budgets, budget legislation because the garbage rate needs to be passed 45 days before the end of the calendar year. And so that will be coming to separately. And I think that that rate's still being fine tuned a little bit. So it might be a little bit less than that 6.2. Expenditures for utilities are 111 million over the biennium with the largest amount of services and charges. Just so you know, 42% of that services and charges is the amount that we collect for King County wastewater and pass on. So it's, wanted to call that out. Some of the highlights for utilities, they're adding, proposing to add five positions over the biennium. Also, our garbage hauler, their rates increased by CPI per the contract. So that's about $3 million increase over the biennium. King County wastewater, we just spoke about, is about 7 million over the biennium. That's that pass-through amount. And then Public Works is also looking at asset management system and some staffing to support this addition. This will really help the city to identify infrastructure that's underground. So we have a really good record of what our assets are. And Public Works Department will be discussing that a little bit more next week in their presentation. The other two preparatory funds that we have are the airport and the golf course. Airport budget is about $10 million over the biennium and some changes for the airport is to increase some rates for their hangar fees. And they've also renegotiated some of their larger lease contracts. So that's one of the things that you'll see when you're looking at the differences between the, this preliminary budget and the adopted budget. Golf revenues are also increasing to keep pace with inflation. Even with these increases in rates, our golf course rates still continue to be one of the lowest municipal golf courses in our region. So over, our goal over the next several weeks is to pass a lot of budget-related legislation. There's a few property tax levy ordinances, a utility rate adjustment ordinance outside of the garbage one I mentioned, fee schedule resolutions as well as 2025, 2026 budget ordinance. So next steps will be that department presentations will go into further detail starting next week. We will hear from Public Works, Parks and Recreation and Police next week. And the following week will be all the other departments. Again, if we run out of time in any of these work sessions, we can always move and expand to that 28 that we have earmarked for in the additional time that we need. So thank you for your time this evening. And I'd like to invite any questions you may have at this time.
All right, no questions? Well, I'll start it off. And I'm sure Ryan will have something as soon as we start talking. I just know how he works. Let's see, two slide, now I gotta, I was writing them down. Now I gotta find it. 18. On slide 18, the, the capital improvement funding sources, what caught my attention was the to-be-determined slice of the pie, $7 million. What, what, what does that mean?
Great call. It's actually transportation benefit district.
Oh, oh, okay, okay. I'm like, okay, hold on a second. I was like, DVD. I should have known. Okay, thank you. That, that worried me. I thought we were looking for suitcases full of money. Okay, I'm gonna move to slide 20 if I can. With that decrease in the, the later years and the, the funding balance and that sort of thing, no, it's still over the, I think you said 12% and that sort of thing. Is there some thought as to how that, I mean, decreasing that slope? I know it's a few years out and that sort of thing. But are we just saying, hey, that's how it's going to be? Or whenever we see things decreasing like that, even though it's still above and we've been, you know, pretty, pretty good at being significantly above? What are the thoughts on, on that, that trend as it gets closer and what we could do potentially to change that and maybe slow the slope down or anything like that?
This is really as if all the positions are filled and revenues come in exactly how I'm estimating. I'm pretty conservative with my estimates. And so if you look at the prior two years, the '22 and '23, we're actually, I'm going the other way where our revenues are coming in a little bit higher. Some of that is just because we have open positions. And so I think that it's really important to look out knowing that that, that line's not going negative. And so I'm not worried at this time. But I think that as we look forward and we continue to move through this, knowing that we're only using $2 million over this biennium, if next biennium, we have a lot of ads or costs go up quite a bit, we might have to have a different conversation about changing our B and O tax rates again or tapping into some of that property tax bank capacity. So we do have some opportunities, things available if we need to.
Thank you. Any questions? Everybody come up with anything? I told you.
Yeah. Well, I had to remember which question I was thinking of. So I, and before I asked my question, I was definitely say, I've, I've, concur in seeing that chart and that downward trend. And I understand where we're coming from conservatively and seeing enough of these budgets over the years. Certainly hope that that won't be the, the future we're actually looking at. But if it is, I know we'll be a little prepared to meet that challenge. My question was on the garbage rate inquiry. Because I recall, we are coming up on a new contract, but is that not till after this biennium? Is that correct or?
Yes, I think the contract, it was a 10-year contract. And I think it was, it expires in 2027.
Okay, so this, this will get us through that one. That was, that was my question, if that would, if that would possibly be changing that. But or is a lot of this just assumed like pass-through in the general legs? I guess the, the allowances when the, the existing contract that we're, we're seeing currently.
Right, the existing contract requires us to, their rates increased by CPI. And with CPI being so high, that's why some of those things are, are increasing. But definitely, you know, that contract's up for renewal and we can definitely consider going out. They'll probably go out for an RFP for this.
Thank you.
So my question is on page 12, the preliminary property tax. Do you have a sense of, for the average family, if we were to use some of the bank capacity, what, what, what will the average family experience in terms of their property tax going up?
So just with this amount, it's about $13 per average family that will be going up.
For a thousand of assessed value or $13?
$13.
$13. Good answer.
Just with this assessment. So if we used our bank capacity, two years ago, when we used some bank capacity, it was about $50. I think we assessed an extra $1.5 million and it ended up being about $50. It changes though based on what the assessed value of property is. And so you have a couple of different factors. We're not only increasing the amount we're assessing, but there's also a calculation that goes into it depending on how the assessed value increases or decreases of property values.
So, and maybe this is directed toward Eric more than you, Carrie. What's the conversation in Olympia about the property tax cap? Do we know?
I, I know that I've been pushing for it every year to talk about that extra 1% to increase. It's really hard on cities to balance budgets.
Yeah, and the folks that we've talked to believe that it will be on the agenda this year, that there's conversation ongoing right now.
That's hopeful. Thank you.
My questions are gonna be more in-depth for the departments when they present. But I did want to say, the video that was created was fantastic, very comprehensive. I really loved it and enjoyed it. And just overall, your presentation is really digestible. And I do appreciate all the work that you put into it. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Don't feel pressured.
No. I have, so I, in terms of survey results and, and there are four areas that are the priorities. The human services, because you mentioned for the public safety, I hear there is eight officers. Right, that's gonna be.
Eight officers and one evidence.
Right, eight position. So I guess it's more in detail. But I, I wanna kind of see, in terms of the health and human services, what are kind of generally is, is, you know, kind of a sneak peek of what, what does that entail? Because as far as like public safety, I'm kind of seeing, okay, it's just with officers. But health and human services, is there particular programs? Is there, kind of just wanna see more specific?
What the survey was saying is that these are the priorities of our community. They want us to focus our efforts and our dollars in looking at these areas. And in the survey, I think it did ask some specific questions on some other areas to focus on. But this is definitely something that the community is saying we need to do. How that looks could be a variety of different ways. And I know that our human services team has done an excellent job at really making sure that we're spreading dollars different ways. We have lots of programs here at the city. We have our housing repair. We have direct support to human service agencies. We have reduced rates for seniors and disabled individuals. And so we, we have quite a few programs at Brenton, which is wonderful. And so the survey said, this is a high priority and keep, keep doing the good that you're doing. By adding this $3.5 million to our budget this year, we're actually going, we're going to be close to 5% of our general fund dollars are going to human services, which is higher than the last biennium, which was 3%, which I felt like we had made great ground even two years ago when we increased it from that 1%. So I think we're moving in the right direction on that.
Questions behind. On the, the airport golf budget slide, slide 24, is it the general goal or is this coincidence that the revenues and expenses pretty much, you know, are, are, are in line? In airports instance, okay, maybe a hundred thousand dollars more. The golf course, a little bit of a loss. And you mentioned in, in the increase in inflation. And this may be for the particular departments and that sort of thing when we get to the, to the presentations. But is it the general goal to not necessarily just to be self-sustained, not make a lot of profit? And don't get me wrong, I appreciate the prices at Maplewood Golf Course and that sort of thing. But I mean, I'm just curious is that, because I don't know in past years what the breakdown has looked like. So I'm just curious about what the goal is.
The expenses figure include capital. And so although the revenues for golf are 9.3 and the expenditures are 9.7, there is capital improvements that are budgeted. So that's why it looks a little bit upside down. I think the goal is always, whenever setting rates as a business, is to make sure that we have a rate that we, it's something that the community can absorb. So we want to make sure that we have continued amount of visitors at the golf course. And so we don't want to have our rates so high that we lose patrons. And so I think the goal is definitely to make sure that we're not losing money, but we want to make sure that we're keeping a good rate and providing a good service and not being over the top ridiculous and bringing in too much money either. So a nice balance.
Oh, I'm sorry. DJ, okay. I'm gonna make sure to run the, run the cycle. No, council member bad.
Thank you. I appreciate you mentioning the 20 position. So going back to the position, with this new budget, I know it's kind of high level here versus details. But if you can help me understand, within those position and how we came about with, because of the reorganization and things like that, the raise the wage initiative, were there any effect in losing position in staff, certain population of staff getting increase in their salary? How does that work into play with this particular budget?
The, the minimum wage in our city does impact our supplemental wages, so our part-time staff. And so specifically, the Parks and Rec Department, as well as the golf course, has quite a bit of part-time staff. So some of the increases at the golf course are to account for any increases in minimum wage. Positions were not lost because of minimum wage changes.
Perfect. And then council member Ohio.
On this same slide then, for Parks and Recreation, does that, does those three FTE represent addressing that restroom maintenance need or is that elsewhere in the budget?
The restroom cleaning is elsewhere in the budget. It's in facilities.
Gotcha.
Follow-up on that. Is that in facilities now because of the labor regulations? I mean, is it, are we contracting that out because of difficulties with, for example, I don't know, with the union not wanting to clean toilets anymore? Or, you know, whatever.
I think that I'll let Martin answer that next week because I think he'll be able to answer it better. We're, yeah, we're looking to outsource that for restroom cleaning.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
You ready, Martin? We have that question. Any other questions? Well, hearing none, I will say, can you whet our appetite for the next few weeks? So we look forward to hearing more of the in-depth budget proposals and that sort of thing.
Good job.
So with that, we have nothing else. Meaning the whole meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.